Council President Montes.
President.
Councilwoman Anthony.
President.
Councilwoman Castillo.
President.
Councilman Correa.
President.
Councilman Espinosa.
President.
Councilwoman Harris.
President.
Councilman Iglesias.
President.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Here.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Correct.
Councilwoman Miller.
President.
Councilman Narducci.
Here.
Councilwoman Ryan.
President.
Councilman Salvatore is absent. Councilman Taylor is absent. Councilman Yurid.
Present.
You have thirteen presidents, you're about to be having a forum.
The question for each of the citizens is going to be that councilman Pedro Espino. Sorry, communication is going to be there by councilman Pedro Espinosa.
Thank you. Eternal God, Creator and Savior, we've come before you tonight to ask that you grant us wisdom, knowledge and understanding as we prepare to make important decisions that will impact the lives of men, look into our hearts, minds, souls and guide us every step of the way so we can stay true to our God, to our principles, to who we are and to the people we represent. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The question for each of the citizens is going to be that councilwoman Catherine Kerwin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of this state. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Chair, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, before the proceedings, can I take a moment, by the way, to acknowledge some of the audience who's here today, of course, actually, he's one of my six council presidents and it's Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman, former president Peter Mancini of the City Council. Please stand up and come on up.
Yeah.
I just want to say, you know, quite quickly, Peter Mancini, of course, I call him a friend, personal friend, and he served with distinction in his neighborhood and he brought, uh, in the city and he's just one of these folks that's like, you know, be proud of that he's part of this great body that we're part of today. So, President, why don't you come on up?
Mr. Clerk.
Approval of Minutes, Item Three, Journal of Proceedings Number Twenty-Six of the Regular Meeting of the City Council, Day November seventh, twenty nineteen.
Motion for motion, second. Motion has been made, second, according to item number three, uh, all those in favor. All right, votes are passed.
Election and appointment of certain city officers, item four, election of one council member to the water supply board.
Madam President, just a matter of memory, uh, council board, that was covered.
Second, are there any other obligations? Are there any other obligations? Are there any other obligations? The either, um, the clerk just passed one thousand for councilman Michael Correa.
So voted. Appointment by the Zon and Layer, Item Five, Communication from the Zon and Layer.
The right, Madam President, motion to wait the reading of item five received. Second, motion has been made, second, with the reading item number five, all those in favor.
Aye. Madam President, may I just say, um, I want to acknowledge the acting, actually, no vote, acting, Sarah, Sarah Mary, please, why don't you stand up? Um, actually, we've been very fortunate throughout the years, uh, she's been working with the city closely, she knows the city's finances, she has impressive financials, she's a great, uh, uh, advocate for the city of Providence, and I just want to acknowledge, uh, this is the person who is actually going to help us with the city's finances, continue steering hopefully in a continually positive, um, direction. So, I acknowledge her, if you want to come all across the bottom, and the President, I think that up to your decision. And congratulations, by the way.
Congratulations. Um, this is the acting, that the official appointment is going to be coming up soon. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk.
Discharge from committee, item six.
The right, motion to move to discharge from committee and to pass item six on a roll call vote. Second. The motion has been made, second, to discharge from committee at number six and to pass item, uh, roll call vote, all those in favor. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinosa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iglesias.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore is absent. Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurid.
Aye.
You have fourteen ayes and one absent. The matter passes.
Thank you, uh, Leader Ryan, instead of motion.
Motion to take item, excuse me. Madam President, motion to take item twenty-two out of order.
Second. The motion has been made, second, to take item number twenty-two out of order. Mr. Clerk, would you please read item twenty-two?
An ordinance establishing a tax stabilization agreement for West Michigan Partners LLC, located on assessment five twenty, lot four oh nine, two oh three, West Michigan Street.
Is there, the motion has been made, um, just, uh, motion has been made, second, to take item number twenty-two out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, votes, there I have it. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the item? Oh, Leader Ryan.
He did, Madam President, and I made a motion to pass item twenty-two for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second. The motion has been made, second, to pass item number twenty-two and a roll call vote for the first time. Uh, Chair, may I be asked?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me quickly, from the council colleagues, just, uh, the folks that have had the following, the folks that have, um, you know, uh, been touched concerning this matter, this is the proposed tax stabilization. Very quickly, I, I just want to, I opened the windows recently, just a second ago, and why I did that is to give a little sense of history. Unfortunately, when I first started as a council president, this Councilman Mancini, they were, first things I voted on was actually the tax treaty for the progress of this law. So, all the things you kind of see down the middle of the buildings, and they're, then it exists. That tax treaty, that, that, that tax treaty that we voted eight, seven, eight in favor, seven against, started the whole, from the IGT building to the Blue Cross building, to everything you see, uh, from Blue Cross, nothing that existed. And it was a very difficult vote, but there was pros and cons, why you should, why you shouldn't. Why I talk about that is because if that vote did not go positive at that time, the very thing that all of us are living in now, which is you see a lot of positive buildup there right now, it's a lot of dreams in the skies, a lot of development and opportunity for our city and our neighborhoods and our citizens. This is another one. As you know, unfortunately, when we walk up City Hall on the council side, we've been walking up the building, by the way, for I don't know how many years it's been, let's call it beat up, boarded up, dilapidated, and it hasn't been the, what you want to say, like, hey, this is the place to go. And you think about it for a second, when people come to City Hall and look at this great city, and then right next to it is boarded up, beat up, actually, architecturally pretty building, but nothing's happening. It sends a message, it's not a good message, it's not a positive message. So, we have an opportunity tonight. Now, it's not perfect, nothing is perfect, an opportunity to do it tonight. Now, we can do this and do nothing. Now, people say we do nothing, we say, you know what? People say, the next twenty years, you're going to collect, yeah, two million bucks. That's a good thing, right? Who doesn't want two million dollars for a city? Tonight, the council has an opportunity not just to collect two million dollars for the next twenty years, but close to six million dollars in the next twenty years. The council also has an opportunity to collect zero, or instead, collect almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our parks and recreational trust account. The City Council this evening has an opportunity to collect zero for housing, collect close to six hundred thousand dollars to our housing trust account. By the way, if you all remember back in July, we passed the city of order, it was a law that says, tax dollars for TSAs, ten percent of the money that we collect goes into the housing trust account. And I have to give the kudos to my council colleagues, and of course, by the way, Councilwoman Mary Kay Harris, one of the most passionate spokespeople of Fort Worth, and she was dry mad. By the way, it's also Councilwoman, uh, Castillo, Councilwoman Ponte, all the Councilwomen around here, I gotta tell you something, it was, it was a big, it was a big, uh, issue, and we came over and answered, and I thought it was positive. So, that is what is in force. Also, by the way, let's not forget this, tonight, we're beginning to go zero for any new full-time jobs in the city of Providence, although, yes, for a hundred and fifty-four new full-time jobs, permanent jobs, all tonight, it equals zero for no new construction jobs, although, yes, two hundred and thirty-three new construction jobs. Now, like I said, TSA's aren't perfect, but there's a lot of positive to this proposed year's plan. I asked my council colleagues, I understand there's pros and cons, I asked them to think hard on, and think, some of you are here, I know my council, former council president was, and some of you weren't even here, the day when this place was barren and empty, from what you see today, we have an opportunity to take the progress the city has. So, I ask all of you to support it or forward, yes, for numbers of dollars of tax dollars, yes, for housing money, yes, for parks, yes, for permanent, um, jobs and construction jobs. And I think at the end, you'll all be happy, because the very council members who voted, know, twenty-plus years ago for the vote, I've seen them the past, past twenty years, and they go, you know what? I should have voted for the vote. With that, I ask all of you, just to support it. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry, Councilwoman, there is, in the, Councilwoman Castillo. That's really nice and sweet, I believe you said. But were you thinking about, like, what kind of job they gave to the community? Uh, excuse me, they didn't give it to the community, because they said they tried to give that job to the community. That's just the first one. Second one, undone, and being, that's giving more to pass that thousand of estate for rich people, promise to give that job to the community. In my work, in my work, people give me a four-figure pay, one thousand three hundred dollars for rent for their two bedrooms. They give seven kids and nine neighbors, because the family had to get two jobs to survive and bring food for this house. So, what are we doing? We are here to support people for progress, and that money is for the people for progress. I don't say we're not. Of course, we need to raise money. Of course, we need affordable housing. But, you know, how many times they come to progress has the same thing, and they're not, they give a really job to the community, and we are still in the same, same, doing the same thing. I believe, you know, if you guys want to sleep really good tonight, don't support this thing, because my community be hurt, the workers be hurt, and the staff of progress be hurt, and that all of all, construction guy, okay? And you don't think about that. You think about it, because that building has to be alive, and that's true, that building has to be alive. But I think, you know, it's not that. Thank you. Councilwoman Yurid.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just say, so I, I came to Providence, uh, almost seventeen years ago, and at the time, it was very similar, right? There was, I come from a couple of cities, and I was here on the other side of this, what do we call this? This wooden thing. And, uh, you have to remember, I have that finance committee, with the same organizations that are in this room tonight, right? And then, talking about people that are developing, we were saying a lot of the same things. And so, I think now, so that's about seventeen years, and I know this conversation's been going on for longer than that, I think with no balance for this project, for me, right, because we don't know, right, like, I don't know what the intentions are of the developer, but I would say, if we give public money out to a private project, we have this opportunity to, like, really raise the floor, uh, and, and, and get something back for our city. And so... So, for me, no matter how you vote tonight, I just, I want to say, we have this opportunity, and I believe every person who's sitting, uh, behind the placere in this room, right, has an opportunity over the next, uh, let's say, four months, to seriously consider the proposals we produced, uh, at the last gathering, in the last couple of weeks, that do a few things. So, one, right, we have an opportunity to say that when the city is giving public money to a private project, we know the standards of labor for the project that's going to get constructed. And, and number two, we got it, we got it just in the program as well, right, because this is the also, this choice between building and people, it's, it's just not true, we don't have to go back. Like, again, no balance with this project, I think we can, in twenty twenty, move forward in a different way, I think we all in this group, we can work together to do that, and I thank you all for that. Thank you, um, Councilwoman Castillo, we were, in terms of really supporting and thinking about how can we better support our local community members, and thank you, Councilwoman Miller, for raising some critical points, um, about the way our TSA structure is currently set up. But I do want to remind everyone that there were many people here who voted for the ordinance change for the Fain Tower. Now, that is a development that hasn't even purchased, hasn't even financed, financed, the financed, the parcel that we, in this chamber, not me, and any of, and some other council members, but the majority voted to change it. He would be receiving thirty million dollars without even a TSA from the city in tax incentives for a three hundred million dollar development. Not only that, he just recently asked to give a one thousand dollar deposit on a three hundred million dollar development. That is an insult to our city. But you know what we did? The majority did? They voted to change the ordinance, so he can build without even purchasing, securing financing to purchase the land. Now, I agree, we do need to take, um, change our taxation, our TSA structure. Council, um, Anthony and I were away in San Antonio just recently, and we went with other leaders, uh, mayor, city council people, to talk about these, this very issue. One of the things that came up was, there are many municipalities that have a standard procedure for this type of stuff. So, most of them have, like, a fifteen-year cap or any TSA, there are requirements that are up on. We don't have a standardized process, and we've been trying to push it, but it hasn't gone through. Now, with this particular TSA, there is a guideline, of course, we also approved in the budget to hire someone to actually monitor the TSAs, to ensure that all of the things that are listed are delivered. There is a apprenticeship requirement, there is a WBE, MBE, there is a first source requirement, which I've been an advocate to make sure that we're hiring from our city and people who are inputting their information in first source. However, that has been a problem. So, with a person in place now, that should be enforced. There's also a recording requirement. So, what I hope that comes out of this is that we hold this developer accountable. What will happen to this company, if we don't sell it? What will happen to this building if we don't sell it? You know what happens? The developer, because he purchased it, and write off, that's a tax write-off, and he will not get any incentives. Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Miller, you were one of the advocates, along with many, myself and other council members, in supporting affordable housing and creating the housing trust fund. There will be ten percent of the, um, income generated from the taxes that goes directly into the housing fund. We have, we, oh, you're absolutely right. When I put a motion through during the whole Fain Tower situation to ensure that a certain percentage of whatever units were developed in that, um, in that, in that project, was allocated for affordable housing, the majority of them did die. We can't believe when we're going to vote for TSA or when we're going to vote to support a development. We need to be consistent. At some point, if we do not generate enough revenue, commercial revenue, then you know who the burden's going to fall on? The residents. Us. Our taxes are going to increase, and we're going to find ourselves in some real fiscal, we're going to face some real fiscal challenges. We're already there. Absolutely, but we can help mitigate that. So, there needs to be a balance, we need to generate funds, we need to also hold these developers accountable. We have a private city, I agree. You moved here seventeen years ago, I grew up here, I came to this country when I was three years old. I grew up, and my parents have been living here over thirty years.
Were born and raised here.
I went to the Providence Public Schools, my kids are in those schools.
Hey, what up?
I do, I do want, I do want our city to be supported, I want for us to build affordable housing opportunities, but I also understand that we need to generate revenue to support these efforts, to support our parks, to support our housing initiatives, to support all these initiatives, and most importantly, to hold these developers accountable. One of the other things I did ask, I, I did ask, was for the developer to also participate in, on the summer youth program, so that we can hire youth who might be interested in the hospitality, but hospitality are hotel industries, which would be a great apprenticeship opportunity for our young people, and it creates a pathway for them. But more importantly, we have invested effort, we have invested, um, funding to ensure that we have someone in place to, to hold these developers accountable, and to ensure that there's a recording that's out, so we can know that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So, I have issues with a twenty-year TSA across the board. If you want to change, if you want to change the structure, then you need to propose a new TSA model. But if, if the developer, if we have an ordinance in place, and the developer is following the steps and will abide to what is outlined in that ordinance, we can't just say, well, you know what, we're not going to give this TSA, because it's wrong.
It's a runaway.
It is not right. It is not right. So, it's either we follow the processes that we have in place, or we don't. But if we choose not to approve this TSA, then we can't approve anything.
A few things. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
And if the mom agrees, she's agreed, so this is Merry, Merry Christmas. But, uh, what I'd like to say is that, uh, just talking a few things is, that in two thousand eighteen, uh, the internal law, in January two thousand eighteen, the internal law, the Matt Clark, uh, did a ninety-five pay report. I was a councilman at the time, but, uh, he said that the TSAs were not compliant, they were not compliant. There was fifty-two TSAs at five hundred million dollars. We just hired a guy, the city administration hired someone, uh, about six months ago, he came in front of the city finance committee and had some papers, which we sent them back to the court, where it looked like it was something from Iceland, to try to read. So, my thing is, we're not following, we're still, we added another, uh, this will be nineteen, uh, nineteen TSAs. We don't know if the fifty-two, we know the fifty-two are not being complied by. So, when we talk about the, uh, the first source and, uh, the apprenticeship and everything, we don't know if the original fifty-two are being complied by. So, now we don't need to add another eighteen.
They're not, they're not.
I know, I know they're not, but we need to have someone look into it and find out if they are. This particular, uh, developer came in front of the finance committee, and I asked him several times, what type of jobs? They were creating, getting a hundred ninety-four jobs. Are they middle-class jobs? Are they middle-class jobs? I asked several times, and they never got an answer. So, that disturbs me, it also disturbs me when he bought, he tried to sell a building, he owns a building, already paid four million dollars for it. So, he got a six million dollar tip from the state, he's getting federal credit, and he's saying that in twenty years, if he doesn't get this TSA, he can't go forward. I find that hard to believe, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. He applied to start the project.
That's right.
So, I, I said, last couple meetings ago, that I'm not voting for any TSAs, we need to make sure they're compliant, we need to make sure they're enforced, and I urge my councillors, there's people out here that live in my district, what are they getting for the TSA? Affordable housing, if they put the thing in for, we're going to get affordable housing. If they're not being compliant, the other fifty-two, how do we know that the money's going into the parks department? Like, it's supposed to, we don't know. So, I urge my colleagues to vote against this, and I think a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, this person should be able to afford it by year.
Madam President, there are a number of those questions.
Councilwoman Harris.
I stand here today simply because I feel like I've been this day job, day job with me. It really bothers me when workers are pending against each other, it just feels bad. We ourselves know that in order for us to change and change the system, we have to be fortunate to do just that. It's no doubt in our mind that we have not, since I've been here, been incredible for how many women I served as council people accountable for these TSAs.
Yes, that is true.
I can say that I, myself, am put in the same position around the same time with the Fain Tower decision making. But let me tell you, workers, as you approached for, uh, demanding also at the time for that building to be built, because it would satisfy workers. What I heard from that whole thing, and by the way, I've been really glad with most of you and all of you who have participated throughout my organizing period, I spent thirty years organizing, and I continue to organize, because I do believe in order of life, I do. So, against, rather, this, this subject, this subject right here, is a subject that we have to count, uh, the grime on, and the grime must be that we cannot compete against one yard and yard.
That's right.
What happened when I decided to build the Fain Tower, it wasn't about something new thing, it was about the noise that I made in this room, where I heard people talking for affordable housing, for people who I see every day in my neighborhood, who at this place, I have no home. Mothers who call me up and say, what can I do? Because I have no place to grow with my child. I'm sleeping on the friend's couch, but they have to leave. What you supposed to do at that period of time? You supposed to push in a position to make things change, or to see the changes that has to happen, around who gets what end of this bank? I came in here absolutely against TSAs, absolutely against it, especially on record against a twenty-year TSA. However, however, when it comes to the fact that we have to hold ourselves accountable, one of the things that were came out of the Fain Tower that I became so proud of, whether you know it or not, was the fact that this council, this leadership took on the responsibility... was the fact that this council, this leadership took on the responsibility of making sure that people don't have to land the streets at night because they have no roof over their head, or limited shelters that they're being displaced and pushed out of, or fixed aid from people have no opportunity for real housing because the rent base is so out of control. So I appreciate my colleagues, but here's how I would put that was. And pass the law for the Housing Reserve Fund to take away 10% of these tax breaks to be put towards housing. That was not when the Fane Tower came here. There was no rule, there was no law, there was nothing to hold the rich and the wealthy accountable. We're working hard. Now today, I made a decision to vote for this. And shame, shame on you, shame on you. If you give up, you're going to have people to lay on the ground than to have opportunities for housing as well. You have to write your jobs, and you have to write your decent jobs, and work with the council, keep working with the council. Try to be a, just like the Reserve Fund was created for housing because people decided that they would work with the council. And the council did a wonderful job in making sure that a law is in place. From here on, any 20-year tax related form that you see, we'll have the Housing Reserve attached to it with that. I demanded that, I demanded it from the beginning, I demanded it now. I got three years of this position, and I will fight till I'm blue in the face to make sure that the city itself, starting with the housing crisis that we have, and move forward. And I vote for my colleagues who are part of that, who are leaders, who are leaders and we have many decisions. So I really want to give honor to my, my colleague and my workers. My organizers, who I don't feel we know what you're doing and I don't get what you're doing. But I would tell you, I really want to push this housing. And I think you can listen to me.
Stay a living wage.
We gotta boost a lot of workers.
Exactly.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor, about the TSAs. That we might not know if they're working, if we're looking accountable. That's why we voted to ensure that's funding to support someone to monitor those TSAs.
We don't provide.
And, and, in addition to that, if there is an issue, you can always request a report to, to review, to see what the issue might be, or to have a conversation with the Taxation Department to make sure that the TSA requirements are paying, are, they're abiding to whatever the requirements of the TSA may be. And so we voted on someone, we voted on a budget to ensure that there's someone in place to support that. And as Councilwoman Harris said, again, we have an affordable housing crisis. This will allocate 10, this will allocate 10% from a hotel, 10% from hotel development into an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I know what it means to not have adequate housing. Living on this city, I know. I live in poor housing, I'm a lifeless survivor. I know what it means to not have adequate housing. And, and there are many people on council who's fighting for that, but we need to generate revenue. We have one of the highest, so we have one, what is the legal, is making, is, is forming an agreement around, with a developer, where it should be an agreement between the union and the developer. So there are many, and also, but what we need to consider is that we need to generate revenue. We have one of the highest, in the country.
Council President, point of vote. We're not here to debate TSAs right now. On, we need to keep our discussion of the matter before us.
Councilwoman Harris, please wrap up because I left this week before, for a second time before everybody else.
That is, that is fine. But I'm just making the point that if we are not going to support the TSAs, then we don't support any other TSA. With this. We already purchased it. If we have a structure that's in place and is abiding to the terms of the structure, then we need to make sure that we're not denying someone an opportunity to develop in the city. And just one last point, in terms of Councilwoman Taylor, he referred to me as the French. I do want to correct you that. And in person, just because someone speaks eloquently and passionately, particularly of Latin, of Latin, of English, of Spanish, of American, of American.
All the voters, all the voters. Councilwoman Anthony was waiting, Councilwoman Anthony, please. Um, the motion has been made as second to pass item 22 on a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Clerk, next vulnerable.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo.
No.
Councilman Espinosa. Councilman Iliozzi.
Aye. So.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Shh.
So.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
No.
Good job.
Councilperson Addison. Councilman Taylor.
No.
Aye.
Eight ayes, six noes. The matter passes for the first time. The turn for passage the second time. Item seven, An Ordnance Amendment of Chapter 27.
Leader Ryan. Motion to pass a matter of the first time, vote, vote, vote. Seven, eight. Second. Motion has been made as second to approve items number seven and eight. Um, to wait the reading, to wait the reading of item number seven and eight and to pass it for the first time on a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Clerk. Second, a second.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Councilwoman Harris.
For the conclusion of the meeting. Yes. We're gonna, we're gonna repeat, so we're voting for items seven and eight as a roll call vote to approve the items seven and eight.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo. Is absent. Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinosa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iliozzi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore. Is absent. Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Jordan.
Aye.
You have 13 ayes and you have two absent. Um, the matters passed for the first time on a roll call vote. Uh, sorry. Those matters actually passed for the second time on a roll call vote. Presentation of ordinances, item nine, Council President Montes and Councilwoman Correa. An ordinance amendment of Chapter 27.
Leader Ryan.
On concern for the second reading on these ordinances, my motion was to pass for the first time on a roll call vote. Do I need to retract that or to change my motion?
Uh, I need a motion.
Motion to pass item seven and eight for the second time on a roll call vote.
Motion has been made as second to pass item seven and eight for the second time on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Castillo. Is absent. Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinosa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iliozzi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore. Is absent. Councilman Taylor, aye. Councilman Jordan.
Aye.
You have 13 ayes and two absent. So the similar matters passed for the second time on a roll call vote. Presentation of ordinances, item nine, Council President Montes and Councilwoman Correa.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of item nine and refer to the Committee on Ordnances.
It's like, motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item number nine and to refer to the Committee on Ordnances. All those in favor? Aye. Close stand down.
Council President Montes, Councilwoman Correa, Councilwoman Kerwin, and Council President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of item 10 and pass it for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second. And to refer?
To refer to the Committee on Finance. Pass it for the first time on a roll call vote and refer to the Committee on Finance. My apologies, Madam President.
Second. Motion has been made as second and it's going to be to pass item number 10 for the first time on a roll call vote and it's going to be referred to the Committee on Finance. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo. Is absent. Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinosa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Iliozzi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore. Is absent. Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Jordan. You have 12 ayes, one aye, and two absent. The matter passes for the first time on a roll call vote and is referred to the Committee on Finance. Item 11, Council President Montes.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the readings of items 11 through 13 and refer to the Committee on Public Safety.
Second. Motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item number 11 through 13 and refer to the Committee on Public Safety. Uh, Councilwoman Anthony?
I'd just like to address number 12, item ordinance. I'm very appreciative of the work that the committee's done in defining, you know, trying to a meaningful definition of nightclubs. I guess I would just say that I'm reading the proposed work of the technical base more than I'm doing on, because it's the language is rather vague and uncoercible. The second thing I'm concerned about, I'm just going to say it at this point, is the banning of 2:00 AM licenses in certain commercial zones. I feel like we're relocating the problem, rather addressing the problem on the grid and making all the problems come down to the downtown area. And I just, just wanted to express my concern. I know that we're dealing with it in the ordinance, but I just wanted to say, say that at this point. So thank you.
Any other comments? Motion to read as second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Yeah, I have it.
Item 14, Councilwoman LaFortune, Council President Montes, and Councilwoman.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of item 14 and refer to the Committee on Ordnances.
Second. Motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item number 14 and refer to the item, the Committee on Ordnances. All those in favor? Uh, close, yeah, I have it. Sorry, Councilwoman Montes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank all my council of colleagues who co-sponsored this ordinance. Um, one of the issues that we have is poor coordination between the utility companies as well as the W, who see how some of our rules have been impaired and then the utility companies go back and pull up some of the work that hasn't been done. So hopefully you visit, provide a framework, dispatching, better coordination and better communication. And also for item number 20, um, it could allow us to do some reporting, um, reporting, um, it could allow what we require. Thank you.
Madam President. Um, Councilwoman Harris.
If permitted, I would like to be also a co-sponsor.
Councilwoman, if I can. Anybody else who wants to sponsor?
I do, if I may.
Uh, Councilman Espinosa.
Yes.
So noted.
Okay. So motion has been made as second, all those in favor? Aye. Close, yeah, I have it.
Presentation of resolutions, item 15, Council President Montes and Councilwoman Correa.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of items 15 through 21 and to pass in a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item number 15 through 21 and to pass in a voice vote, all those in favor? Aye. Close, yeah, I have it.
Madam President.
Chairman, you have a special record.
Item 21, also I have to, I accuse myself, item 21. And I signed the paper with the clerk, just to record.
So noted.
Thank you.
Transmissed following, Committee on Finance, transmissed following the recommendation as saying be adopted as amended, item 23.
Leader Ryan.
Um, Madam President, 23, yes. On, make motion to pass item 23 for the first time on a roll call vote.
Second. Motion has been made as second to pass item number 23 on a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo. Absent. Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilman Espinosa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris. Councilman Iliozzi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerwin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Narducci. Is absent. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore. Is absent. Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Jordan.
Aye.
You have 12 ayes and three absent. The matter passes for the first time on a roll call vote. Transmissed following.
Madam President, leader Ryan. Motion to wait the reading of item 24 and receive and approve.
Second. Motion has been made as second to receive and approve item number 24, all those in favor?
Aye.
And have it.
Transmissed following what the recommendation is saying be approved. Item 25, resolution authorizing the approval.
Madam President. Motion to wait the reading of item 25 and pass in a voice vote.
Second. Motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item 25 and to pass item number 24, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, yeah, I have it.
From the clerk's desk, item 26, petitions for compensation for injuries and damages.
Refer to the Committee, severely refer to the Committee on Finance to be sued.
Communications and reports, item 27. Communication from Gina in the Hospital Internal Order dated November 25, 2019, submitting the review of the code of ordinances, Chapter 12, Health and Sanitation, Article 3, Arrogant Trust Reviews, Section 12-63D.
Received.
Item 28, certificates from.
Madam President. Leader Ryan.
Motion to wait the reading of item 28, refer to the Committee on Finance.
Second. Motion has been made as second to wait for the reading of item 28 and refer to the Committee on Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, yeah, I have it.
Presentation of resolutions, congratulations. Item 29, Council President Montes and members of the City Council, resolution extending congratulations.
Madam President, motion to pass item 29 on a voice vote.
Second. The motion has been made as second to pass item number 29 on a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, yeah, I have it.
Presentation of resolutions in memorial. Item 30, Council President Montes and members of the City Council, resolution extending 78.
Madam President, motion to pass item 30 on a unanimous rising vote.
Second. The motion has been made as second to pass item 25 on a unanimous rising vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam President.
Leader Ryan.
Motion to suspend Rule 16, League of the Province City Council, moves to hear matters not appearing on the printed document.
Second. The motion has been made as second to suspend. The motion has been made a second to suspend the city council Rule sixteen B, um, to take on items that didn't have a year in the print or document. Others in, uh, others in favor?
Aye.
Post, yeah, have it.
Communications, item thirty-one, communication.
Leader Ryan. President, motion to wait the reading of items thirty-one and thirty-two and refer the committee on community dependence suit.
Second. The motion has been made a second to wait the reading of item number one after the two and refer to the committee on community dependence suit. Others in favor?
Aye.
Post, yeah, have it.
Madam President, if I have a motion before this, um, business before this honorable body, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. The motion has been made a second to adjourn, others in favor?
Aye.
Post, yeah, have it. Um, the members of the committee, um, president, just saying.